The call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of June 15, 2022 to order. Could we have a flag salute by Commissioner Turley Trejo?
All of you join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hegel?
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Vice Chair Turley Trejo?
Here.
Chairman Watts?
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Commissioner Telesio.
Do we have any public comments tonight? None?
None.
Very good. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to the Planning Commission at temeculacca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. On the consent calendar tonight, we have the minutes of our June 1 meeting and that's it. So unless there's any corrections or...
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Ruiz, seconded by Commissioner Turley Trejo. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's a four to zero vote. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting, by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to Planning Commission at temeculacca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. Item number two, long-range planning project numbers LR21-0909, an amendment to Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code, adding chapter 9.80, shopping carts. Mr. Mark Collins, go with the staff report tonight, I believe?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting to you the proposed shopping cart ordinance. The proposed ordinance would amend the Temecula Municipal Code Title IX, adding chapter 9.80, shopping carts. The ordinance will require that businesses that provide shopping carts implement specific theft prevention measures. This new, kind of a little backstory, this New York Times article from 1971 describes how a total of 492 shopping carts were stolen and then how the managers ended up having to go physically get them themselves. And then a article from 1989 from the Los Angeles Times stating about shopping carts that the stores were losing about 12% annually. So this is not a new issue. We've been facing it for quite some time. Okay. Temecula has approximately 80 businesses that provide an estimated 9,000 shopping carts with a value of approximately $2 million. We estimate 720 shopping carts are stolen each year in Temecula, costing our businesses an estimated $144,000 annually. State law. California Business and Professions Code makes it a misdemeanor to remove a shopping cart from the premises. There are two caveats to this that make it difficult to enforce. If there's no sign on the cart stating it is illegal, it is not considered theft, and the cart must be taken with the intent to deprive the owner, making it difficult to prove in court. And for the city to take action, the city has to have 72 hours prior notice unless it's in the public right-of-way or a public safety concern. The city of Temecula paid approximately $27,000 to retrieve, store, and return or salvage shopping carts in 2021. This does not account for the cost of staff time in coordinating pickups, taking in and resolving complaints, and managing these contracts. The proposal would require signage on all shopping carts and business entries and exits. There will be three theft prevention methods available and one required. Those options are a coin token deposit system, kind of how Aldi does it. Another option would be businesses provide carts for sale or rent, or finally install a perimeter disabling device on all shopping carts. These requirements would be applicable to all new development that make shopping carts available for customer use, and it would be applicable to all existing businesses that provide shopping carts, and they're required to have those prevention measures in place within one year of ordinance adoption. There are two exemptions proposed. Businesses that provide shopping carts that are not capable of leaving the store, such as Ross and some of our other discount stores, they would be exempt from the requirements of this ordinance, as well as businesses that provide shopping carts in quantities of 10 or less. They as well would be exempt from the requirements. These exemptions would be under the three-strike rule. If we were to find three of a business's shopping carts in any 12-month period, the full requirements of the ordinance would come into effect. Our business outreach. On January 12, staff attended the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting and briefed attendees on the ordinance. Between April 4 and 8, staff delivered 82 outreach packets, which you have behind your agenda tonight, and we sent them out to the 82 retailers, and they included the letter explaining the cause for the ordinance, the ordinance itself, and then a business card requesting comments within 30 days. Comments received were three total. Staff received a call from Ron Foss, Albertson's regional manager. He called staff, was understanding of the issues and complexities involved, and he recommended retailers be permitted to hire a cart retrieval company in place of theft prevention measures. The issue with this is that the cart retrieval company does not prevent the theft itself, and we would be right back to where we are. On the same day, April 26, April Payne from TJ Maxx Field Operations emailed staff and provided information that they are currently compliant with the proposed requirements of the ordinance. And then on the 29th of April, Ryan Elaine, representing the California Retailers Association, sent staff a letter expressing his organization's concerns. Primarily, they wished us to clarify acceptable physical measures and create an exemption for businesses with less than 10 shopping carts. The acceptable physical measures was left intentionally vague as we do not know what technology or changes to shopping will come in the future, so we kind of wanted to leave it a little loose. And then the exemption for businesses with less than 10 shopping carts, it seemed reasonable, so staff included that in the ordinance. This item was brought to the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee on January 18. There, it was recommended that staff bring it to the Planning Commission Shopping Center Subcommittee, and it was taken there on February 16, and again on May 18 to present the results of the public outreach. It was presented finally to the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee on June 7. Staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Title 14, Chapter 3, California Code of Regulation, Section 15061b3. And staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a PC resolution recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance and find the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, per Section 15061b3. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions of staff? I'll start on my right here.
The letters that were handed out, did you speak to many of the owners, or were these three responses the only response back, or was there any kind of feedback that you got on-site?
There was. I asked to speak to the general manager at all the retailer establishments. Sometimes I spoke to speak to the general manager, sometimes it was the assistant manager, but I did speak to a representative of every store. As far as some general feedback I got, it was pretty varied. A lot of the managers were unaware of their stores' policies on shopping, on their specific shopping cart theft prevention measures. There were concerns with, they wanted a police action versus a civil ordinance. And then there were some, two businesses, Armstrong Nursery and the Habitat for Humanity retail store were the only two businesses that I visited that didn't have issues or claimed not to have issues with theft of shopping carts. Additionally, there were some businesses who believed that retrieving shopping carts was a function of the city, so that was quite easy to disperse. And then I did learn that the electric carts that go around the mobility scooters in stores, those are already tethered to the stores. They can go a certain distance and they will cease to function. So they already have them in place for the more expensive units.
Got it. And then, I've heard of them, but I don't know how the Aldi thing functions, so I understand that a coin goes in to release the cart. So as far as deterring theft, are we deterring theft with 25 cents of that? Is that really the only deterrent? Versus, I mean, I know you mentioned that theft, or the cart recovery company or something didn't really deter it, but in comparison, it's a quarter is all that stopping that person?
Yes.
For that particular part of the measure?
And as I've been preparing this ordinance, as far as all the shopping carts we've been finding, I have not found one Aldi shopping cart in the city.
And remember, there's the three strikes rule. So if we find three Aldi shopping carts within a 12-month period, they have to, it becomes the city's prerogative to which of the three options they need to employ now. So we would be able to say, well, your quarter system's not working, you need to do the perimeter locking system, and then we would have the authority to do that. So long as it's working, they can do it. They have the option to do it.
And then would there be specification for the small businesses that have 10 or less? They'd be somehow either grandfathered or notified, and they just couldn't grow past that 10 shopping cart. I just don't want to have the impact on a small business that has, as expensive these carts are, to have to redo all their stuff. I guess that was a part of that concern. So as long as they stay under 10?
They would be exempt, yes, sir. And then the three-strike rule for everybody.
Will still apply. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just a question on, maybe you can go back to the slide about originally the Okay, so this is what it used to be, is what you're saying?
This is current state law.
Okay.
So this is what is in place.
So basically, yeah, it looks like you can't really do anything for someone who steals a cart, yeah.
You have to wait 72 hours.
Yeah, you had to wait 72 hours and blah, blah, blah.
And they have to pass the first bullet point tests.
Right, right, okay.
So it's pretty ineffective.
Right, right. Okay, then the other question I had was on the slide on physical limitation? Is it physical, what was it? Physical measures, to clarify, acceptable physical measures. Can you just kind of clarify that for me?
Yeah, of the three options, as Luke was saying, if those options are not effective, beneath that, the city has the option to enforce any theft prevention measure that would be necessary to prevent theft. So if these measures don't work, we can go above and beyond.
Okay.
But we wouldn't want to.
So it gives you that leeway, since we don't know kind of what the future's going to hold, basically, with shopping carts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Could you describe how the system works that prevents the carts from leaving the property?
Yes, absolutely. This is a quick diagram of how it works. Obviously, it can be broken out into a shopping center for individual stores. A wire is buried around the perimeter of the shopping center, wherever their property line may be, and then when the shopping cart is within that area, it is free to move, and then the red wheel up on the right-hand side would lock if it crosses that line.
Okay.
Essentially rendering it ineffective to move.
These systems are deployed in many locations too throughout the country, so...
Really?
Yeah, these aren't like state-of-the-art. This is pretty common.
Yeah, well, and I can see the device is small. I would assume it's not super expensive.
It would range depending on exactly how they purchased it. If Walmart were to do it for several of their stores, the cost would be significantly less than if a mom-and-pop shop were to try and do it for themselves. So as far as the Costco, I've estimated anywhere from $10,000 to $50,000, depending on the number of shopping carts and the size of the parking lot. And then Food for Less has already installed this on their own. When I was out doing my rounds, dropping off the letters, the manager of Food for Less, actually, they installed this not too long ago, and they saw a significant decrease in the amount of theft they had for shopping carts. And this was pre-contact from us, this was on their own.
Yeah, I think, you know, this isn't something that the city really wants to do. And we've been looking at this for many years, and we finally decided it's time to do this. So we understand that there's a financial cost to the business to do this, but there's also a cost to the city, to the taxpayer, to picking them up. You saw the $27,000 figure, which is only because we have an actual figure. It's much higher than that for the city to deal with this issue. It propagates homeless encampments all over town because it's a, basically, a freight system for them to get the stuff around, so that's an issue. So, and then you have to couple that, the cost with the, now they're not going to be losing so many carts, so there is an offset there as well. So we tried to balance this action with the reality that businesses face. We've come to the decision, you know, to the point where we think it's, you know, it's reasonable to say, considering all the negative externalities of loose shopping carts, that now's the time to actually, you know, go to the business and say, you have a part in this as well. You know, we're here, we're all here together. Now it's your turn to step up a little bit and take some responsibility for what's going on with your carts.
Have we ever charged a business for, or I say not charged, but asked for reimbursement for the cost? I mean, would I work out at the $27,000, it's about $28 per cart. Have we ever thought of or have ever attempted to get reimbursed?
We've talked about it, but we've never actually done it.
Yeah, okay.
Because, and the reason, I think ultimately the reason why is that, you know, it comes out to $23 a cart, but it's actually much, much more than that. We haven't taken into account city staff's time, you know, all the overhead, everything that goes into, you know, that's just the contract to pay the guy to go around and get them. There's so much more than that.
Well, I would imagine, I mean, even retrieving and returning a cart that is a quarter mile down the street is one thing. Taking it out of Murrieta Creek is a whole nother thing.
Yeah, and then we have to store them. So we're using city storage facility to store all of them before they can be returned.
One thing that maybe we might consider is the timeframe that we give them to install a system. I think it was like 18 months or something like that, is that?
One year.
One year. Given the cost to certain stores, we might want to consider making it two years or something, something like that.
One year from when?
Yeah.
When it's adopted? Okay, well, that's a suggestion for staff, so.
But they've already been notified, right? All of these businesses have been notified, so that something is in the works, right? When you went and talked to them?
They were notified that the ordinance was coming. They were not notified exactly of the timeframe.
Right, but what I'm saying is, so that's kind of, it should be on their radar that that's possibly happening. So that would be not included in the year. That's over and above when the ordinance actually is put in place.
Yeah, yes, you're right, but I wouldn't consider that to be any kind of legitimate notification.
Buffer? No, okay.
It also, are you done, Bill?
I was just gonna say, you know, just if the cost is a burden on a business that, you know, they, we are allowing as much time as we possibly can and still trying to solve the problem, rather than saying, okay, you can't afford it, we won't enforce it. I don't think we want to go down that road, or else we're still have a problem again. So, and I know for certain kinds of businesses, given their parking lots and everything else, the complexities of installing it is going to be greater than other stores. So that's my only thought.
Okay, my comments on that?
Go ahead.
I'm sensitive to that. That certainly is a concern, but every one of these companies was notified in person it was happening, and we didn't get any responses back requesting a time or anything like that. So I think you're headed down the right path. The suggestion's been made, unless it's made in a motion, I guess you would have to come back and reintroduce it if you changed it without us doing it on a motion, correct?
Right, so right now, we're in the portion of the meeting where you guys are asking questions.
Right.
And then when you close the public hearing?
Right.
You guys can certainly talk about what kind of changes to the ordinance you want to do?
Oh, yeah.
What kind of direction you want us to go with, so.
Okay, well, my comment strictly was related to the fact that I think we've given them, we've given the notice and we did not get any feedback stating the need for that. It certainly is understandable, but with that, we've had, any other discussion, yes?
Yeah, sorry, just one other question. So what, I was trying to read through here. So ordinance takes place, people install, do what they need to do, and then the city finds shopping carts from ABC Business. What's the penalty to them at that point? If they've done this and the cart has still been stolen off property, does it go back to them, to that business, that their carts are still being out?
You mean, what would the city do if they had an enforcement measure in place and the carts are still being stolen?
Yeah.
We would, first of all, we would contact them and work with them and talk to them and say, hey, we have an issue here. If it kept being an issue, then, you know, we could, you know, do a code enforcement action. So we'd notice a violation and then citations after that to get them to do what they need to do to make it happen. And there's also a spot, there's also a provision in the code that says, if your countermeasures are not working, the city can dictate what countermeasures that you have to employ to make sure your carts aren't leaving your property.
Got it.
So we have those, we hope to not get to those, but, you know, those are tools in our belt if it comes to it.
What about the other side, which is the person who's taking the cart? Is there, I guess that's not code enforcement, that would be police. Is that considered stealing? And what's the value of the cart? That is it? Where would that penalty be?
So in the beginning of the presentation, you saw that there's kind of a couple tests you have to be able to say, this has been stolen. One of them is that the cart has to be labeled.
Right.
You can't steal this, basically. It has to say that.
Yeah.
So if that's the first thing would have to happen, and if they stole it, that's theft, and that would be a police action. That wouldn't be a code enforcement action.
Okay.
So it would be the police that would actually have to deal with, you know, theft, petty theft, shoplifting, not code enforcement.
What's the approximate cost of a cart?
Pre, pre all this inflation craziness, it was anywhere from $150 to $450 for the double-wide Costco ones.
Okay.
So at this point, probably a bit more.
And I believe they'd have to go up to $950 before it becomes...
That's what I was wondering whether...
More of a get-er's theft. And any, and a petty theft is probably just going to be, if action is taken, would probably be a citation.
A citation, that's it.
But the thing about the locking system, that one of the three measures is that you're not going to get very far with the wheel locked. So, I mean, that's hopefully a pretty good deterrent from moving it around town.
Yeah, I mean, that, I would think that that's, that's a much better system than the coin thing, because, I mean, you're facing taking a cart or getting 25 cents back. That's not, getting 25 cents back is not much of a deterrent, so if you're intending to steal it.
I don't think it is either, but we also wanted to be very flexible where we could, and we know that system already exists in town, and we know that that system isn't producing any carts in the wild, so to speak. They're doing a pretty good job with that, so.
And it's easy to use. I mean, I've used it at Aldi's, and it's a very simple system, so.
Okay, one more.
You thought you were done.
No, we're not done.
Okay, so then, so besides the three choices that they have for theft prevention measures, all of them, they have to have that sign on the cart, period, right?
Correct.
Every business. So that is mandatory required.
Yes, ma'am.
And then they choose one of the three.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So looking at this letter, TJ Maxx, so they have the gatekeeper locking system?
Yes.
Which is the one that you showed where they can't go further than the perimeter? Is that what that is?
Correct. TJ Maxx is a little different. Theirs is actually in the store, so their wire is buried at the front of their store. Their carts can't leave the store proper.
Oh.
So they have the gatekeeper, but it's used a little differently.
Okay, okay. So they're using that. They have, so they've already taken care of one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
They've made that choice. So they're good, and they have the signs already up. Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
I think the big difference with, is between retail stores that are selling clothing and that type of thing versus shopping centers, or I mean, food stores where carts need to go out to car. That's, I think, the major split there, so.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Glad I could be of use. Is there any more discussion? And if there is not, then I would love to entertain a motion.
I think that you made a good point about, you know, first of all, awesome that they went out and talked to every single business owner. Like, that's, so no one can say, well, they can, because they will, but they can't really say, you know, you didn't talk to me, or I didn't know anything about this, or I couldn't have any feedback with it. So the fact that there wasn't feedback, well, we need more time, or we can't, you know, whatever. I think that we should keep it with that year with what is, how it's already set up, because if that hasn't been asked for, you know, why are we going to offer it, is my point. So that's one thing I wanted to say as far as the motion itself.
Yeah, and I want to add too that this is a properly noticed meeting. The subject was noticed. All the people that were affected by this were contacted and are made aware that they could have been here tonight to contest it. The three responses we got, two of them have already complied, and the other one was just lacking specifics, if anything better than that. But, so, we don't have much response coming here in person. That tells me that we must be pretty good with what we've done. So I feel pretty good about this, and I think it's overdue, and I certainly have a lot of experience with shopping carts throughout the city, because, like Bob, I walk for my exercise. So it's discouraging when you see them scattered throughout the creeks and used for other purposes. But anyhow, those are my comments on that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion or move the item unless anybody has anything else they want to discuss. Are we good?
No, I was convinced. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to move the item for the long-range planning project numbers LR21-0909, an amendment to Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code. So is that all that I need to say?
Yeah, you can just say, I'll move that in for staff's approval.
I know, I can't. I thought that was kind of fun.
Staff's recommendation.
I thought it was kind of fun, because we haven't been able to do much, so anyway.
And to be clear, the resolution is recommending the city council approve and adopt the ordinance.
Right, right.
I'll second.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Ruiz. The motion was made by Commissioner Turley Trejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes four to zero. Thank you, and my compliments to the staff for making the effort to contact everybody. I mean, that goes so far. We're transparent, and we're open, and we're open to suggestions and stuff like that. And I think, I think the audience kind of represents the fact that you've done a good job at doing that, so give yourself a pat on the back. We appreciate that. Okay, that takes care of our public hearing. We have commissioner reports, so this time I will start on my left. Mr. Hegel, do you have anything to report tonight?
I have nothing. I have nothing.
My compadre here? No?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay, very good. Um, I did want to report that I, first of all, I'm sorry I didn't let you guys know about this last time, but I just simply forgot. I think it's the Community Service Department is, is, has a project where they're going to decorate a lot of the utility boxes here in the old town, in Old Town with art. And they made a, um, public, a call for public art and public artists and that to submit, um, ideas that reflected the theme of This is Temecula. And the Community Service Commission called for artists, and they called for all, um, participation by all the commissions. So I got noticed as the chair that they wanted to represent from the Planning Commission. As the chair there, and on short notice, I decided that I think I'll go ahead and represent the commission rather than bring it to everybody and do that type of thing. So that's why, and then it slipped my mind. So anyhow, the project is in fact has been done. Several people sat in and evaluated all the submissions, and they have come up with a bunch of Temecula themed art that will be, if you're familiar with SeaWorld, or not SeaWorld, but, um, Seaport Village in San Diego, they actually have utility boxes there with art on them. So they do some sort of, I don't know the details on the process, but they shrink wrap or something like that. And it really adds to the, the flavor of the town. So I took part in that and represented the Planning Commission, and I think the report will be coming out, or the art will, will be coming out soon. And I know last night at the council meeting, they talked about putting it on the website to show which pictures were selected, and I think there's a great variety. I think there's seventeen, sixteen or seventeen of those projects.
Was there, was there a theme?
This is Temecula.
Oh, okay, that's.
And to give you an idea, one of the submissions, I won't say anything more than it, was subject title Hemet. So you can imagine, it probably wasn't one of the finals. But anyhow, you'll be very pleased, I think, with the results when you see the art itself. It's quite varied, and, uh, balloons, vineyards, Temecula itself, wildlife, people, kids, uh, front street, you name it. There's really quite a wide variety of that, so. No pickle, no pickleball. In fact, I, I wouldn't vote for the pickleball, no, 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 no. Okay, well, that's my report. I apologize. I'm late on that, but I will try to be more prompt in, in the future, and certainly.
Mr. Chairman, did, did you get a color swatch of the proposed artwork for Lanay's benefit?
I will say that it was available. I chose to use my little thirteen inch computer, and it worked quite well. I actually was, just real quick, uh, when I went into the meeting, we had a meeting to finalize everything, and the process was extremely fair and unbiased, and we just voted by popularity. So that made it very nice. But it was, um, it's good. You, you will, you will like it quite a bit. I thought that my picks at first, I got, man, I'm the only one here that liked this one and that one. But by the time it all ended, they were all really the ones that won. They were liked by almost everybody, so. That'd be good. Keep your eyes open for that. That'll be good. And that's my report. Sorry once again for being late on that. Do we have any subcommittee reports? We had one today that Adam will report on, I believe.
Yep, so we had the Royal Park Ranch Subcommittee Report earlier today. Um, it was some representatives from Woodside Homes about, I think it was pronounced Shawwood, if I'm going to pronounce that properly, at, at Summers Bend, proposed type of a name. Really unique kind of way of constructing homes. Parent company's actually out of Japan, but it's a post and beam kind of setup system. Very high tech. It's toler, tolerance down to one millimeter for all of the building that they're going to do. Other unique part, it's resistance to earthquake and fire. So some, some safety factors that have gone in there. Very clean kind of style of construction. In fact, as I said, the job sites would probably have little or no power tool usage. It's kind of prefabbed, if, if you want to look at that, but it's not the, your typical prefab kind of a home. But just a really unique style. Looking to bring this to Summers Bend, this would potentially be the first of its kind in the state of California, from the production level possibly in, in the whole United States, so bless you. So some really potential media coverage and, 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 you know, futuristic potential, you know, way of, of building things here with, with Temecula right at the center of that could be really cool. Fifty-seven lots, seven floor plans, two separate elevations, twelve different color schemes. And then if you're familiar over there with Summers Bend layout, these would be on the perimeter, the larger lots on the perimeter side of Summers Bend. So, um, pretty interesting. They do have some concept homes that they've designed in Las Vegas, but those are more a little on the custom side. This would obviously be kind of brought into the productions, production side of things. So they did a great presentation, lots of information. I think it'll be something very unique to our area, for sure.
Are they like net zero homes?
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, thanks for asking that. So they'll be zero energy ready. They'll, you know, they're obviously concerned with some of the pricing. These would be a little bit, you know, higher priced homes. But they will have the option, they'll all be, every one of them will be zero energy ready, with some have the option to be completely zero energy, battery storage, solar, you, you name it. In fact, one of the videos showed like a blackout happened, but, you know, everything's still functioning in this home with the battery backup and all that. So there'll, there'll be a cost to that. The technology really behind this could really influence cost a lot, so they want to be aware of not pricing out of what the consumer would want here. But they've had some test markets, and they've gotten some, some really good feedback on it. Of the seven different floor plans, five of them are single story. So I know it's been something we've talked about here as well, so.
My understanding is one of the other benefits is that you can move certain walls within the house very easily. So you could take, say, a wall out and make a, you know, two bedrooms into one big bedroom for three years while you've got a teenager, and then when they're gone, you put it back to two again.
Yeah, the, the walls actually contain all of the, all of the weight and pressure of it. And they, they were talking a lot in Japan how there's very little land space to develop, so these become very generational style homes, and they're built to last, you know, a very long time, so that you could potentially have, like Commissioner Hegel said, you know, a four bedroom setup for a younger family that then becomes, you know, move, be able to move a couple of walls within it and then create like a two master suite area for later, then kind of cut it back and convert it back later. So some, some, some really cool. Uh, Shawwood, S-H-A-W-O-O-D.
Cool. Interesting.
Anything I missed there?
No, in fact, in fact, I would envision you being on a lot more, um, subcommittees and giving reports, because that was, that was about the best thorough report I've ever heard from a subcommittee member. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Any check the colors?
It's kind of neat to, um, see Summers Bend come together, you know? We've, we've been dealing with that for years now.
Summer or solver?
Potato, potato, all right? Anyhow, it's nice to see it all come together. We've, we've dealt with the big picture, you know, initially, and now as each thing is moving along, we deal with so many things, it's confusing to remember them sometimes. But when you see it all come together like that, it's really a, a good feeling and know that all the work that's been put into this is really paying off.
One other thing to add, they do have a slab poured with some of the post and beams set up on site over at Summers Bend. So if you're ever out and if you're doing any of your walks or anything like that and want to go check it out, it, it's available to be seen over there right now.
If any of the commissioners have further questions on that, just as far as maybe details or something, who should they contact? Luke?
That would be Scott Cooper.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Mr. Cooper would be happy if you have any other questions or need more detailed information on what's done. Great, okay, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's Mr. Watson's report.
Yes, just a couple things. I know a, a couple of you have already RCP, but so if you haven't already, if you're going to come to the Fourth of July Parade, just let Denise know so we can get your parking pass, get you all squared away for the VIP section, so there's that. I also want to second your, your comments on Mark, getting, I think there's like eighty-eight, eighty-two separate businesses. It took many days of his life. I just want to say thank you for that, because it certainly puts us in a good position to get things done. And then lastly, uh, you probably have noticed going through Old Town, but, uh, the restaurants are starting to dismantle their outdoor dining. The city is, you know, effectively put them on notice that their, uh, their, their license agreements are coming to an end, and June twenty-seventh, Monday, June twenty-seventh, is the, the final day that we'd like to see those structures out there. There are, I went, went through Old Town today, and, and, you know, there, at least half of them are already starting to in some, uh, some degree dismantle, so, um, just look out for that. If you have any questions, you can just call us and ask us, you know, we'll, we'll let you know what the, what the latest is. But, uh, there'll be a road closure, if there are any left. Uh, there'll be a road closure Monday, June twenty-seventh, from seven to noon, just for those few hours, just so they, if they need to get into the street with, you know, any kind of heavy equipment or anything like that. I, I don't think they are gonna, but if they do, uh, we're going to have the digital boards one week before at the north and south entrance, letting everybody know. So not only the businesses know, but commuters and everybody know that morning, stay out of Old Town. But it will only be till noon.
So, so the road through Front Street will be completely closed? Is that what you're saying?
I don't, I think we have, Ron, you want to address that, just kind of a?
Yeah, we've been reaching out, Public Works has been reaching out to the businesses to find out kind of their plans so that we can put a map out that's going to accurately reflect the closure. Right now, it's looking like we would go ahead and reroute everybody through Mercedes, because there's going to be some significant trailers being brought in, because, um, we did find out that a few of them are being repurposed and sent out to the wineries. So they're just going to be lifted onto these beds of the trucks and trailers, and they're going to be taken out. So, uh, because of that, it's probably good for us to reroute everybody around Mercedes. So it'll be Mercedes all the way to Second Street.
And that'll give Public Works, um, you know, a few days to get the street cleared, cleaned, repaired for the Fourth of July Parade, which will be that, uh, that following week, so. It's successful, very successful. Uh, we only lost one restaurant through the pandemic in Old Town. And I can't say that it was because of the TED program, but that one restaurant didn't participate in the TED program. So, um, I think it did what it was supposed to do, but the time has come for it to go, so you'll see that.
What has been the reaction of the businesses losing that?
It's been mixed. Uh, you know, there hasn't been a, a ton of pushback. There, you know, there, there are some that want to keep it, obviously, uh, for obvious reasons. But I think for the most part, they understood that it was going to come to an end at some point. Their license agreements were only through June thirtieth. They, they knew that from the get-go. It's a contract. They signed it. So, it, you know, and they're already out there, they're ahead of time dismantling. So it's, it's been a pretty smooth process. I, I can tell you that we weren't sure how it was going to go, and if there would be any lobbying to keep it going, especially at the council level, but that, we haven't experienced any of that. So we're feeling pretty good about how this is rolling in and going to, going to wrap up, yeah.
Thank you very much, Luke.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Moreno, Public Works.
Public Works, so a couple of items. Um, the Waverly Signal at Yonex is going to be on flash starting this Friday. So they're getting it energized. It'll be on a flash mode, stop sign essentially. And then we're going to program the cabinet, and it'll probably be operational about a week later. So the next Friday, it'll be opera, completely operational. So this is the threshold for the first building permit in Heirloom Farms, so that, that, that is coming. And then Wabash. I'm sorry, what's that?
Let me where that is, the first one.
Heirloom Farms is right across from the Mercedes dealership. It's on Yonex.
Okay, but I was just trying to think about where that street was. Okay, thank you.
And then the Wabash Signal, that's the Public Works project at the Park and Ride. So that still has probably three, four weeks before it's operational. So, uh, we have the, I shouldn't say, we have the poles in. However, in this case, we didn't want to put them up because of Temecula Parkway being so busy. We didn't want to bag the lights and have them up, and it seemed more, it would maybe be more confusing, like we did Waverly. So that one's about three weeks out. And then, um, we also have the plans approved. So you're going to see two new renovations. One is the Senior Center, and the other's the CRC. So both of those have been approved. We anticipate construction at the end of this year. So those are com- complete renovations of those two facilities.
There seems to be something going on at the other end of the Park and Ride, and I've seen city trucks in there. I don't know if there's a city project going on there, or?
Uh, we're rubbing, running fiber for some of our security cameras for, that are going to be installed at the Park and Ride. And so we had, um, some conduit that was damaged, so that's probably the work that you saw. They're trying to repair that, so.
What exactly are they going to do at the CRC renovation?
At the CRC, it's pretty much a facelift. It's an up.
For the whole building, but not the pool, the building?
The pool will, no, the pool is completely separate. It will stay open, and we're going to bring in two trailers, uh, one to serve as locker room, restrooms, and facilities for staff. Probably be more than two trailers, but, so that'll be kept open, but, you know, we're going to have to house staff in locker rooms on, on the other side.
Okay.
And lastly, is just our Slurry Seal projects are starting this, uh, summer, Meadowview and Paloma del Sol.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
And that brings us to the end of tonight's meeting. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of the two, uh, El Monte Police Officers who were shot and killed last night by a convicted criminal. Corporal Michael Paredes, a twenty-two year veteran, was killed, and he leaves a wife, a daughter, and a son. Joseph Santana was a, a police officer who had worked previously for San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and I think had been only with the El Monte Police for a year. He actually had grown up in that town. Uh, Mr. Santana also leaves a wife, a daughter, and two sons. So thank you both, and may you rest in peace. And to every other police officer and public safety person in the country, be safe. There are bad people out there that intend to do you harm. And that, we will leave tonight, and our next meeting will be not July sixth, right? But July twentieth. So July twentieth at six o'clock right here in City Council Chambers. Stand adjourned. I know. It's tough. People go to work in the morning and.